Here's Chris. Okay, so. I think. That's all we're gonna have, because I think Bob is traveling. So, will we, well, just turn six o'clock. You guys seen the agenda?
Yes.
Yep, thank you. Alright, uh. Got one more thing I need to do. Before we start, just to get it open, forgot to do that, give me one sec.
And it doesn't look like we started recording yet either.
I haven't either, yeah, I was gonna start recording when we start doing the meeting here. We'll do that in just a minute. We are recording, so this is the. Hideout Utah Town Council Work Session for January 28, 2021. Happy New Year, everybody. Once again, good to see you all. This is electronic meeting without an anchor location pursuant to. The no-anchor site. Determination, which I'm putting up on the screen. Mayor of the town hideout hereby determines that conducting a meeting with an anchor location presents a substantial risk to the health and safety of those who may be present at the anchor location. Pursuant to Utah Code Section 52-4-207, Sub 4, and Hideout Town Ordinance 2020-03. The facts upon which this determination is based include the percent number of positive COVID-19 cases in Utah has been over 30%. January 5th, 7-day average is on 2971. Meeting will not have a physical anchor location, all participants will connect remotely, public meetings are held via YouTube livestream. Interested parties can. Connect by going to the Zoom location and comments can be mailed to hideoututah.gov. This determination will expire on February 5, 2021. So. Uh, we're gonna take a roll call, if I can see you all, I'd have to get it on the, on the voice recording, so. Jerry.
Here.
Ralph.
Here.
Carol.
Here.
Thank you, Carol. Chris. Chris.
Chris.
Here.
Thank you. Okay, we have a quorum. Purpose of tonight's meeting is discussion regarding 2021 town priorities. I appreciate that those gave me information upfront, and then since then, I've got a ton of stuff which I have not been able to incorporate into the document. That I had developed earlier. So, but, and I don't, I have to go see here, because it was BCC'd. There are. I, I don't think everybody got them back, so I'll go through them with you, you all have, I assume you all have. Let's see, I'll share this. Terrible acronym, things getting too smart. Zoom, where'd you go? Uh. Screen share. So. Are you now seeing the Word document?
Yes.
Alright, so this is what I had sent earlier, and then what I'll do is, since I haven't had time to do it, I'll bring them in as we go. From the other ones I received here quickly, so Chris responded that her ideas are represented. Jan. Sorry?
I was gonna say, you, you're probably already planning to do this, but you sent out the last year's stuff as well that I'd like to walk through and we can determine what's. Didn't get done, that we still think needs to be done this year.
Okay. Just wanna get all the, so Jan suggests that we need to, we need to work harder on community engagement, we lost. You know, we lost some volunteers that were helping us in various committees during the annexation activity. And it'd be nice to get some of them back, we just don't have enough engagement from enough of the town's talent, and we'd like to try and get more of that. That's a great suggestion on Jan's part. And it may require me to commit Harry Carey publicly, but we can talk about that later. Ryan. Has added some engineering stuff. So, put that on here. Ralph has added a few things.
Sorry for being a late addition, so to speak. Addition or addition?
No problem, Ralph, it's, it's fine, I appreciate that you took the time to provide some additional input, so. Now we'll come back to the. So. Clint is from the Planning Commission, added a couple thoughts, I think we've got them covered. But. We'll throw them up here, so we can see them. And then Carol Custerly also gave us. Okay. So. See that.
I don't see Thomas in the meeting unless he's the phone number.
He's the phone number.
Oh.
He's that 609 phone number, yeah, he texted me, and that's him.
Okay.
Excellent.
Okay. So, um. Let's just go through these, just briefly, to see if there's any questions on the thought process, again, I didn't, I put everybody's data in as. As received. Did not do any consolidating of the stuff that I received yet, and I just listed everybody's input, so. So, let's just take a minute and look at each of the inputs we received, and if any of you have questions on it. What it means. This would be a good time to ask those. Is it big enough, can you guys see that?
It'd be nice if you made it a little bigger.
You, you can change that for yourself as well, I've discovered under View Options Zoom Ratio, so you can. Make that bigger if you need to as well.
Jerry's saying that each individual has the option to make it bigger as well.
Yeah, if you float up to the top, then a menu comes down, and on the far right side of that menu is the options, and then Zoom Ratio.
My screen sharing paused. Are you guys seeing?
We're still seeing it, yeah.
I don't know why it says pause.
You were typing away, Phil, and it didn't seem, it doesn't seem to appear, where, where is it? Any additions to the document, or you sharing one window and not the other?
I will share again.
There we go.
Oh, I know why, nope, I know what I did wrong. Sorry, give me a second, guys. I retitled the document and it got lost. Okay.
Okay.
Now I think you're seeing the right one.
So Phil, did you wanna go through each of, yes, it is, did you wanna go through each of these points and have the author say something, or, or what, what's the approach you wanted to take?
Well, as you like, Jerry, I mean, I think they're pretty. Most of them are self-explanatory, that's why I'm asking the group to look at them and see if you've got questions. But if you wanna make a few comments on yours, by all means.
Well, I think really it's gathering consensus, you know, if, if this is a single person's idea, you know, mine included, then, you know, maybe we don't wanna spend a whole lot of time on it, but if we. Have consensus that it's a good thing to, to have a look at, then, you know, that might be the first step.
Alright, I guess I skipped a step here, and I apologize. What my intention would be to combine into, into, into a list, and then send back out for a ranking. Similar to what we did last year, an A, B, C, or a 1, 2, 3.
Okay.
Sort of, you know, must-do, like-to-do, nice-to-do, whatever, however you wanna think about it. And so. Because I think, I mean, I, you know, unless there's, unless in the reviews today, we think there's something on here that's totally. In left field. It should come off, then I think the, the process is, that's, this is the input we've got, we'll sort it. Well, I'll sort it by category, put it together in a document for the, for the group to review and give you a chance to. Rank it, sort of an A, B, C, and then, and then we'll take the consolidated. Input from the ranking and review that at another council session. Hopefully we can do that in the January, I'm sorry, in the February meeting, I can get it done in time.
I did wanna say something about the last one there, which talks about the unincorporated, unincorporated areas, there's been some talk ever since we started with our. Annexation map, year and a half or so ago, you know, what. What benefit is there of being in hideout versus just unincorporated Wasatch? If we pay the same taxes to Wasatch, and Wasatch is providing services, then what's the advantage of being in hideout? And I think we need to. Be able to answer some of those questions, and I honestly don't know if, you know, Deer Mountain pays more to have Wasatch plow their roads. You know, do we pay the same amount and just get less services from Wasatch County? I think we need to. Understand what that. Taxing structure is versus services rendered.
I'm sure, Jan.
I thought that was a really good point, Jerry. Go ahead, Paul.
Sorry, I, I think the overall philosophy of that is very important and important for the citizens of Hideout. I can tell you, and I'm sure Jan can jump in a little bit more about this, but if you're in unincorporated county, you actually pay a municipal services. Tax for those services, so there's some services that don't repeat, I mean, yes, generally, living in a town is a little bit more expensive than living. In unincorporated, but garbage up, you know, there, you're, there shouldn't, you shouldn't be paying twice for the same service. So if you're paying it for the town, you're not paying it for the county generally.
Yeah, and so, you know, we, when we look at what services the town offers, you know, we're, we're plowing roads, we're dealing with, you know, water sewer, storm drain. Maintenance and, and such, so, you know, we pay a certain amount of money for, to, to have those things provided for us. Do the unincorporated areas pay something similar to get similar services? So I, you know, I think it's important to understand how that plays out.
Terry, I agree with you, I think this is a really interesting question that you raise, and I think. Soon as I get through some things like year-end taxes and, and audit, it's, it's. A great opportunity to sit down with the county and hammer out some of these details, and, and just analyze what we get.
Yeah, particularly now that we're, we're paying extra to get, you know, the sheriff. Sheriff's Department to patrol.
Right.
Which, by the way, I see them often, so I, I like that.
Yeah, I see them often, too, and I'm doing a better job and not being. Not, not having to talk to them for the wrong reasons. Okay, any, any other questions on Jerry's input?
Other than I like it as well, I think understanding where we are positioned against surrounding areas. You know, because I think there's been town meetings, planning meetings, where you get people coming in and they'll say. You know, we don't wanna pay for that by coming over to hideout or being part of that, and nobody seems to know exactly what that differential is. So it probably serves a few benefits for us to know, but also as a sharing mechanism for other folks to say, well, here it is in black and white.
Yeah, we've also heard it suggested that we dissolve the town, you know, so I think we need to have some arguments that, you know, why we exist and why that's a good thing.
Yeah.
Alright, hey, this is Chris, can you guys hear me?
Yep.
Yes.
Alright, cool. Uh, Jerry, yeah, I think the wildlife fencing is very, very important, notice that we don't have it anymore, and. You know, there's a lot of roadkill, and it's dangerous for motorists, and it's dangerous for the wildlife, and. I don't know what we can do with UDOT, but that's absolutely worth. Pursuing, same thing with the town sign. Let's get something. Else at the Ross Creek, you know, uh. Entrance area. Something that's more representative of. An upscale. Uh, you know, town where people are. You know, buying up real estate as quickly as it can be built. Maybe we can find ways to fund that, that might be creative. Yeah, and I agree with the rest of the stuff, including the post-plan, which I have, had been working with Thomas on, and yeah, it is definitely, it needs to be. Finished, so it can be adopted. So I, I agree with everything you have here.
Chris, on, on the wildlife fence, you don't have wildlife fence that runs adjacent to your property?
Nope, it's not a wildlife fence, it's just a fence, not a wildlife fence.
Okay, yeah, I mean, we've got a fence behind ours as well, and it's like a farm fence or something, it's.
Yeah, it's not a wildlife fence, it's more of a property line fence separating out the private property from, you know, the UDOT. The UDOT. Parcels that are literally up against 248.
Yeah.
I think what, a private citizens group, and I forgot the name of it right now, but. Uh, maybe it's save people, save wildlife, they didn't, what appeared to me to be an unbelievably good job, getting wildlife fencing in around Jeremy Ranch, so.
Good-looking fence.
Yeah, no, they, they, to me, they, they did an amazing thing there, so we could potentially, you know, give them a call, see if they can give us some advice on how to, how to get something like that, how we could. Get something like that in our town.
I, I'd like not to actually come up with the execution plan for each of these items tonight, I'd like to just. Understand them, so we can group them and vote on them, and then, and then we can assign them to subsets of us to try and get them implemented, so.
Okay, so what's the purpose of meeting tonight, just to acknowledge that we have a list, and then we'll work on it outside of this meeting and get.
Make sure you under, make sure you understand the, the line items that have been submitted. So that when you get the consolidated list, you can vote on priority with some background knowledge.
So I like Carol's list as well, and I, I actually thought about the second one on there as well, a vision for the proposed town center, community center. And I, I didn't put it on my list, because until we know that the annexation is going to stick, probably don't wanna burn a whole lot of energy on that. Perhaps.
Or it may help sell the annexation, if that's.
Oh, no, that's a good idea, that's an interesting idea.
The way you feel.
Sure.
I mean. The, the work. That can be done. Around. Why we, those that think it's important. Can help explain their position better, and again, it's on our list to do as a communication center, and a communication meeting with the community, and that's. We're doing, I'm doing some work on that, on the, on the background, and I'm hoping that, that probably late February, early March timeframe will be in the position to do that.
Yeah, it seems to me the annexation stuff is super high priority, if it's, if, if we want to make a case why. Annexation would be really good for hideout, I, to me, that seems like. Very important, and then all the items that. We left kind of open-ended in that. Agreement with Nate Bruckbank, some of the things I could think of are the post-plan and the. Dark Sky ordinance and things that we said would be coming, we should work on those, too.
So, yeah, there are activities that are underway on that, I think I gave an update at the last meeting on what's going on with that, we're, as far as this. Environmental surveys and the, the financial studies and the study for the. For the. Ski lift, whatever, whatever.
Yeah.
So those are underway as well.
And then, then related, the communications around them, whether we're doing a press release, or what, you know, what we're doing to try to. Control the, or influence the. Public, you know, narrative and consumption of this information.
And part of this plays into some of Ralph's as well, talking about, you know, understanding which path we take and the financial impact that that's going to.
Thomas and I had some good discussions on that town center, and I can't help but think Thomas is like, just dying to speak to that issue. Do you have comments on, on that you wanna share, Thomas?
With regard to the town center?
Yes, and the planning that we've talked about.
Yeah, you know, so I think that, I think that it is important that we do that, and I think that as we think about town center, there's two components to it, one is, you know, certainly how the annexation plays out, but the other is. I guess, kind of neighborhood centers and how we might, you know, incorporate some neighborhood commercial into various. Neighborhoods within the community, those that would want it, right, and I think there are different opportunities for that, I think a lot of that is, of course, dependent upon. How the annexation plays out, but I think that the opportunity to still be able to incorporate commercial into some of those areas is, is worthwhile, is worth pursuing and engaging the public and. Seeing what they, what their preferences are.
Yeah, I would agree, you know, no matter what happens with the annexation, I think we, we do need neighborhood commercial, we need to just continue to. Um, figure out, you know, vision, vision for the future and figure out how we can achieve that.
I think some of these things really, you know, we talk about, well, we don't, we really need to address it until we find out whether or not the annexation passes. But I think it's contingent on, on our public, the people who are gonna vote, knowing what's gonna happen. If we do annex, if they do vote for annexing, I mean, I think we need to have these meetings and say, here's what we're proposing for this, you know, for the annexation land. Here's how it will benefit hideout, and, you know, they need to know that, otherwise, I have a feeling they're gonna vote no. So I think you need to make it really positive for our constituents that do vote. We need to have these meetings, I thought we were, I thought it was discussed that we were gonna have town hall meetings.
I just said that, Carol.
Oh, okay.
We're working on that.
Oh, okay, sorry, I think I missed that, okay.
I, I did have a question on the Budget Committee, because we, we had a Budget Committee, has it dissolved?
Yeah, well, two of the members are no longer there, so we have to re-establish, we have to re-establish the Budget Committee.
And there's no doubt in my mind that, that Wes and I working together can produce a, a very good budget to present to the town, but we really need that community engagement, somebody who lives. And, you know, can, can represent people in the citizenry.
Yeah, so, so I was, so I, I was thinking the same things, and Carol agreed with all your items, on the Budget Committee, and, you know, is. One thing I, I would like to know is, what was the last report, what did it look like? What recommendations were in there, and what follow-ups were suggested by the team, and, and was that Vitas who was on that? I can't remember.
It was Kurt, Kurt and Vitas and John.
Sherwood.
Sherwood.
Good, so.
All, all of them.
No, no one knows, guys, they probably did a good detailed job, is that something that we can take a look at as part of our exercise?
The budget is. Public information, we, we have that available, Ralph, I believe it's on the webpage even, we can certainly get you the information for that.
No, I was actually thinking what their recommendations for, you know, I, you know, I understand the budget is public, but what were their specific findings and recommendations going forward?
So Ralph, what we, what we did, we were, we, we have certain time constraints that are mandated by the state, and. At the time we were putting together the budget, COVID had just struck, and nobody knew what the lay of the land was going to be. What our, our objective was, was to weed out anything, absolutely everything that was unnecessary, and we went to a bare-bones budget. With the intention of following up after first quarter, which we did, but we lost members, and so. So Wes and I went through that budgeting process, and it turns out that COVID was good for the town, actually, surprisingly, you know, we, we didn't rely on sales tax. And it's, it's, it's kind of, it turned out to be a, a good thing for us not to have relied on sales tax, so we, we had a really. Happy situation in how COVID affected the town, and we way under-budgeted building permits, and. So that was our budgeting experience last year. And the advice from the state, as we were going through it, is just know that whatever you budget, it's going to be wrong. And it was, but in our case, it turned out to be a benefit, so. That's the last budget, and I don't think it's, it's very relevant information at this point, because we had a surprising effect.
Well, I mean, I think Ralph, I mean, certainly, you're welcome to, you know, we're, we'd love to have you get engaged if you want to. As well, you know, you're working on other stuff, but if you wanna work. As well, you know, you're working on other stuff, but if you want to work on the budget team, we'd love to have you. And there's, uh, you know, you can see the categories and the sorts and, you know, all that kind of stuff. And, uh, by all means, reach out to Jan if you're interested in helping.
Yeah. And, and, and Phil, one of my, you know, thoughts in my own section, when we get to it is what does it look like? What is, what is, what is reflective of our numbers now? And how does that relate to the future in a what-if scenario? What if we have annexation? What if we don't? What if we do this? What if we sell 200, what if 200 homes are sold in X amount of time? So a few kind of what-ifs so that we know what we're seeing in the future. That's where I was going, not so much, you know, the stamp of today, but more like what we need to think about or at least envision financially for our town, um, going out to.
You know, that's one of the, that's great, Ralph. And that's exactly one of the things that I would love to get out of, out of our treasury uh, is, is an understanding of the fact that the, you know, we, the values on the, you know, the property values going up, we have a certain number of building permits that were approved, houses are complete, COs issued. You know, when do they, their tax, when do their, uh, when does their tax basis change? How does that affect our income level?
Yep.
Uh, additionally, how, how do those homes and demands from those affect our, our, our spend levels as well? Right? I mean, and so I'm, you know, I'm, I've already talked about with Jan that, you know, I need to, need to find probably another quarter of a million dollars for the coming year, 21, 22. Because we're going to need another, uh, we're going to need another staff on the public works. Um, you know, we, we need to continue to do maintenance on, uh, system infrastructure, et cetera, et cetera. So, um, so what, what, so I, you know, I'm pretty good on how I want to spend money. But, uh, what we don't have is a great view of, of the things that are coming our way. The other thing that we don't have yet, and, and Jan's working hard on this and it's not her fault because Mida doesn't have their act together. There's a whole bunch of units inside the Mida area and there's funds coming to us via Mida, um, which would enable us to do some of the post-things, for example. Uh, if we had any sense of, you know, when those revenues are coming. And so we could start pitching to Mida that, you know, we want to do this down by the Jordan L entrance. And we want to do this over here and we want to buy a piece of dirt over here to make a pocket park or whatever. Uh, so yeah, there, there's a lot to do here in the, in the budgeting activity.
And, and I know you're totally on this, Phil. That wasn't the point, you know, it's like, um, at all. So if we just get a better view into that future state, um, I think it'll help all of us. And I'm sure you're a hundred percent, you know, right there on, on that.
I'm with you all the way.
Yeah.
Something else that I'm not sure is captured here with relation to the annexation is we've, we've heard some chatter that there's a concern about property values. Um, so if we can include some, you know, study about what the property values with or without, what we have planned in the annexation area, uh, would be, and not just for hideout, but for the areas that are immediately adjacent to it. You know, Black Rock, Parks Edge, Great Treaty, Jordan L, you know, if they're concerned about their property values.
So we have a finance model for annexation, but, and we can certainly add, uh, projected impact on property values. Obviously nobody knows for sure, but.
Sure. But I think there's, you know, there's got to be a way to, um, do some assessment on that, whether that's, you know, some local realtors that.
Oh, yeah, we have, we have people that are in this space, Jerry, that do this. There's no doubt about it.
Good. I, I suspect the, the property values increase, but I don't want my, you know, my opinion doesn't count anything on, on this particular item, but.
And you always have to do a what-if in the bad, in, in the bad scenario, you know, Jerry. So.
Oh, yeah.
What happens if, um, we have another unexpected recession or we have a COVID that drives things in the other direction as opposed to, you know, driving the stock market north, you know?
Well, I mean, those are going to impact property values, whether or not we have a town center or not. But, you know, having a town center is going to have an impact on property values. And we just need to understand what it, what it is. Regardless of any other external factors.
Cash flow, so, um, anyway.
Yeah.
All, yeah, all good, all, all the information that, and maybe more that we need to think about going forward. And I'm not doing, so anyway, I'll, I'll drop it. I agree with you, Carol.
So. Any other questions or comments for Carol's list?
On regional planning, um, Thomas and I just got off a three-hour meeting today. Um, I think you would be surprised what's going on with planning in that regard. There are some really happy things happening, one of which is Summit County and Wasatch County have agreed to come up with a memo of understanding and collaborate on regional transportation issues. And it's really quite a big deal in the fact that, you know, Thomas and I are, are there engaging in the conversations and, and, and weighing in, actually giving a hide, hideout presence to the region. I think that's important. And I continue to go to Summit County meetings and Wasatch County meetings. So sometimes it's just a matter of, of engaging in the issue. And that's where I feel a real loss in, in, um, not having as many volunteers. And I, I think they are so, um, important to the town as we try to gain seats at the table and have more credibility in the community. And, and, um, I applaud all your efforts. I mean, this is our core group and, and thank you for, for all the time and effort you spend. And, um, boy, if we can continue to, to get people like on the infrastructure committee and just continue our, our public involvement, I think it's just really to our benefit.
I agree more.
All right. Any, I, I'm more than willing to volunteer to help more with regional planning. I mean, Jan, you know, that's always been my big thing. So, um, you know, like if, whatever help you need with that or representation.
Thanks, Carol. And yeah, I think if, if.
Help me in.
If we could come up with assignments of, of areas that particularly interest people and, and make them the experts in the town, I think that would really be beneficial.
Okay.
Well, we've got a lot of new residents. Um, so I think what we can do is in our next newsletter that goes out, um, we can work with Carol, um, customally. And let's make sure we get a, a, a big, bold request on the front of that saying, you know, come help your town. You know, make, make your town a better place, you know, come help with, you know, we need people on regional planning. We need people on, um, you know, a whole area of budgeting. We have, you know, a whole list of areas that we would love to have help on.
Most.
Need help on engineering, et cetera, et cetera. So, so we can get that out.
Maybe, maybe we, maybe we go out personally to some folks, maybe we're doing that already. But I know I've been talking to some of the new folks that moved in. And boy, you know, so many extremely qualified people who have moved into hideout.
Oh, yeah.
Who, who have talked about, you know, this subject or that subject. And I'm going, man, you guys got to get more involved because we could really use your, your knowledge, your fifth, you know, your 25, 30 years worth of business experience. Um, that would really help and very few towns have that. I mean, we have a population that are highly experienced. Many have grown their own business. They've been executives in major corporations. Um, you know, jeez, if we can't call on them specifically, we're missing the boat.
Okay.
And annexation.
Okay.
Can, can you explain the first one a little bit more, Phil?
Yeah, we, um, I, I am convinced that, that as a municipality, we, we shouldn't be paying sales tax on town purchases. But, uh, we do. So we have work to do to get that back. Jan's been working to investigate that. We have to file forms. And again, I should come on our finance team, um, for, you know, purchases paid for the town.
So the municipality should be tax exempt, but we're, we're not given that, uh, courtesy.
It's, we have to apply for a refund and it's various rules apply. Um, it can't be through reimbursement to any town employee. Um, there are just some parameters. It's a little clunky.
Okay.
But we have to get better at it and, and funnel our, funnel our purchases through that process as much as possible. So we can, because it's costing us, you know, seven and a half percent of revenue, give or take.
So you and Carol both had some JSSD stuff. Can you sort of talk to what's, what we're talking about with regard to that?
Well, JSSD is the, is the, um, wholesale provider of water and sewer services to the community.
Right.
Um, and we've got to, we, you know, it has been left on automatic for too long. We have been trying to work since I got here to understand what we're, what our grants are, how much water we have, what it takes to get the next tranche, when do we run out? Uh, there have been approvals done, uh, primarily via the, the prior administration for build, um, without any, um, relationship to the water rights they have. So, um, you know, in case of Deer Springs, which is the one that was approved under my administration, our, the current one, whatever, how do, I don't, in my personal one, but since I've been in, they brought their own water. But everything else is, it, it claimed brought their own water, but everybody else is assumed to have enough water based on what the town had. They're all expecting to take, take it from the town. And the work I've done with Ryan so far suggests that, um, and, you know, we're, we're, the infrastructure committee is working on this as well. Suggest that that's, you know, we're okay for the short term, but for a build-out, we're going to have to, we're going to have to secure another tranche.
Makes sense.
I mean, there's 700, 700 units coming with GCT, there's 350 coming at Golden Eagle, um, et cetera. So there's over a thousand units coming. Um, and so we're going to have to get that figured out.
Yep.
And we are in the worst drought year in Utah history. So, I mean, maybe that'll change with the snow, but I mean, that, we need to think about that.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
And what's the? I was going to change the subject, but.
You asked about the, the other part of that is that, you know, can we feed their systems? We're working with them with the water models and sewer models that Ryan's team's been doing to, you know, re, re-engineer some of how we connect into them so that we balance, um, water, water pressure across the, the systems. And there's a lot of dead ends in our water supply because the town has been built in little, little buckets. Um, and we need to close some of those loops so that we can, you know, have, um, have more uniform pressure across the lines. You know, we have some people complaining they don't have enough water pressure. Other people are sitting worried if their pipes are going to break because the pressure's so high. So, you know, we're trying to get all that stuff straight now and we need to do that with, with their, with their support as well.
Okay. And the speed sign, sign installation?
Yeah, we have, uh, we just purchased two, uh, solar-based smart signs that, that tell you how fast you're going, like you see in many other places. Um, so, um, and we've got to get those set up and installed. And, um, we're going to work with the, the police on that as well. I mean, right now we only have two, so my thought would be that we would install in a way that they can be, um, they could move around some because they're just, you know, they're just clamped to poles kind of thing. Um, so I might want to put in six poles and have them move around for two signs. And if the budget permits in the coming year, we can buy a couple more and get them in there. So they basically, uh, they also are smart. They record, uh, the information. So you get data on not just, um, not, it doesn't just flash and say you're going too fast. It tracks and tells you that, you know, 80 cars went by today and 75 of them went too fast. Right? Or, uh, that kind of stuff. So that's going to give us some good data to work.
It's not recording license plates or anything. It's just instance-based, right?
Uh, so I, I'm not sure yet, Jerry, how, how smart they are. I'm still learning about them. So I'm the, I'm sadly, I'm the technical support on this project. So, um, so it's, it comes slowly, given my technical skills. But, okay.
Hey, Phil, before you leave your list, I, I got a couple of more on going back to bullet two. Get overdue is paid by large delinquent accounts. Do you have a snapshot in your mind of, you know, is like, how, what percentage of our annual expected revenue, um, uh, from taxes is in delinquent accounts? Do we know? Um, and is it growing?
Twenty percent.
Twenty percent? Wow.
Twenty percent, you know, of our, of our annual budget is in delinquent, is delinquent at the moment. Um, but we're working on that. Polly's helping me with that. We're, uh, we're, you know, part of it is, a good chunk of it is, is with our, with the Mustang relationship. And we're working on, um, filing. If we don't get resolution on payment shortly, we'll be filing, uh, claims in court to get paid. So Polly's helping with that.
Yep.
She's still on somewhere.
I'm here.
There she is.
Yep.
So.
It's got to be a chore in and of itself.
She's, she's more than willing, based on our, based on our first few days, first few experiences. We're, we're ready to, to take it to the next level.
Yep.
And, and I'm sorry, Paula, were you, were you going to say something?
No, that's it.
I, I, I got one more bullet there. On the Mustang Hideout Quarterly Meeting, what did you mean by that? Attend, participate?
We have, we have them, right? And we had the first one and we went through the list of products, items that we talked about as a council. Um, and, uh, at the moment, none of that has moved forward. We've been given lip service, uh, on the pond, for example. Uh, we, we've been told that the engineer for Mustang is more than willing to work with us. Uh, every time we try and reach out to him, he doesn't want to work with us. We've been given, um, stories around why they don't want to fill the pond in the winter, um, et cetera. So we're, um, you know, we're, we're, it's, we're having the meetings because they're committed doing it. But the, so far the results are, uh, the minimus at best.
Yeah. Sounds like we're beating a dead horse on that one.
Well, that's why we're ratcheting up, uh, the noise.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Um, there, under other suggestions, I, I simply pulled these from, um, the newsletter that we put out describing the 2020 accomplishments and the 2021 targets. Somewhere in that, in collecting the information for that newsletter, these two suggestions came in and Carol published them in the newsletter. But I'm not sure of the original source, so they're just listed as other topics.
Yeah, the first one ties to, you know, one of mine. And I'm not sure, you know, which is the chicken and which is the egg here? Do we need the agreement with the state park before we can entertain these access points? Or do we need to get the access points finalized before we can get the agreement with the state park, et cetera? So we just need to work that out.
Definitely, we need to have the state. Definitely. We need to have the state park agreeing and we have work to do to do that. I know Chris can talk to that.
Yeah, but we're not talking about solutions today. But no, Jerry, I do know there's one access point already roughed in and then just stops dead in Deer Springs. And State Park knows about that. And then the other in Deer Waters, I don't think the state park knows about that yet. That is literally up against fence line. So it's pretty easy to just cross over onto an existing trail. So, yeah, that's just a priority we've had. I, I wonder though, you know, with our capacity to get things done between now and June, for example, if this is going to make it, you know, in the, on the priority list, when we know we have annexation related items and budget related items and reimbursement related items, you know, the, the other things that are, you know, in my mind, likely to become more important, at least in the near term. But these are things that we definitely still want to do.
Yeah.
And Jan spoke about, you know, I put this down this way, but obviously it's the stuff we talked about, about getting more from members of the community involved and all that, of all part of this. Put it down as a single line item, but we'll flesh that out.
Mayor, can I just comment on that? I, I have the same problem at work, right? You know, in my work life, I think one of the challenges with community engagement is empowerment and getting people to realize that if they can contribute, you know, some of their skills, even if it's not a huge amount of commitment, but if it's a lot, I, I think they can make, really make a difference and I, we need to somehow, and I don't know how, we need to somehow get that message out to our community. I, I think it's most likely, since we're such a small, still such a small community, it's probably, you know, individual contacts with people, as Ralph was mentioning earlier, you know, to try to, to get him engaged. But, but the, being able to relay what kind of empowerment they have in order to make a difference is, think is, is going to be important, too.
I, I agree, Chris. I think, you know, the majority of us that are serving, serve to some part because we want to, in whatever way possible, control our own destiny. I mean, we live in this community and, you know, that's why we serve. And somehow we need to, as you say, impart that notion to, to help people get in more involved.
Yep. Well said, Jerry.
And, and I think one of the issues we have is, you know, there's not, not everybody's in town all the time or they're not residents. And I don't know if they feel disenfranchised, yet they want to get involved. And I don't know, you know, I, I think, I think back to Sarah, you know, who, who was really out of town and, and look at her commitment. You know, if we can just get that kind of thing going, even for some, what I call part timers, who have an enormous experience and backgrounds. So, not sure how that gets done here, but I think it's an unusual situation. I've never, none of the towns I've been in, I've lived in have had that kind of mixture of, of people and residents. So we have a unique situation, but maybe that unique situation can be worked in our favor.
Yeah, no doubt, Ralph. We have a ton of experience that's untapped.
Right. And part of our issue is this whole COVID thing and having to meet by Zoom and not actually meeting, you know, in a community center or town hall. And it's also winter, you know? Hopefully in the spring, things will open up and, and we can make more personal contact. And I think that would be good.
Yeah, and I think some people, and I don't know from your experience, because this was a big item on, on, on my list, I think it was my number five. But nevertheless, it's like, maybe they, maybe they feel that because they're not voting here or, or they're not here all the time, that they can't make any commitment to our town because they're voting in Chicago or something. And, you know, I think maybe if we craft messages to folks like that in a different way, then maybe they will contribute. It was fruit, fruit for thought more than anything at this point.
Yeah, Ralph, for me, it's a, it's always the what's in it for me, being able to answer that question. I think, yes, Sarah is a fantastic example of a part timer who devoted quite a bit of energy and talent, you know, to, to the town. I think a lot of people, you know, if they're, if it, they may, they may not want to get involved. They want to just live their life or whatever and live in a nice place. But for those people who have the capacity, we have to somehow find them and, and get them engaged.
Yep. Total agreement, Chris.
Yeah, I mean, one, one thing is that some people, you know, either have, this is, this is a vacation property for them and they just want to come and vacate, recreate, et cetera. Some folks are retired and want to be retired, et cetera. So we, you know, it's not that they don't have talent. It's that they maybe have not, have decided that they're, that's not how they want to spend their time. They'd rather go fishing, skiing, biking, whatever. But we'll try, you know, I don't disagree. We have lots of, lots of folks out there. So we'll keep, we'll go bang on some doors and see what we can do. So these are engineering projects from Ryan.
I'm curious about the last one. We have stuff left over from the chip seal.
Yeah, we haven't, we haven't paid them their final payment because there's still a few things we want them to do.
Like the tar cleanup and that kind of stuff?
They got some tar on a car. They have to pay that bill. They, you know, et cetera. There's a few things like that. We've got to follow up.
Okay. Now we, maybe this is off, in, in the same vein, but we still have some issues from All West's installation. There is, you know, where they cut across the road and they then patched it. Those have settled and in some cases, those are worse than the speed bumps.
Well, we have, depends where we are, Jerry. Some of those are All West, some of those are Rocky Mountain Power.
Okay. So I'm in particular on Longview by where the, just past the curve on the, on the uphill side, just before you get to Chris's street. There's a, there's a ditch there that's.
I think that's a Rocky Mountain Power one.
And that's old. Jerry, that's been there for more than five years.
It's getting worse, though.
Yeah.
It's sinking more.
Yep.
And, you know, something else, can we paint our speed bumps?
We can, but we're not going to do it till the spring.
I, I get that, but, you know, I've, I, you know, I've been in a Lyft or Uber before back from the airport and those poor drivers, they, they don't even see them coming unless you warn them.
Well, there's signs, there, there are signs there, Jerry.
Well, I, I get that, but, you know, they're, they're short and, you know, if you're, particularly at night, if you're not paying attention, you, you see the yellow mark across the whole road, but a little sign maybe you miss.
But we, you know, we can paint them and, but they don't, you know, they get warned pretty quickly, unfortunately. But yes.
Since you're talking about painting, there is a crossing that's near the golf course maintenance area, but it's where the paved trail crosses the road and goes to the other side of the road. It'd be nice to have like a, I don't know if we could do a crosswalk or something there, just to reinforce the fact that there are humans that end up out on that road a lot.
I agree. And it's a dangerous area anyway, because you come around that curve, you, you don't even see. And, and the two sides don't line up. So, you know, they're like 15, 20 feet difference. So it's, it's an odd.
It, it is. I mean, that's a wish list item. It'd be, be nice for, you know, public safety if we have extra paint.
Well, honestly, I'd probably rather push that entrance on the golf course side further up the road. So it's further away from the curve and line it up with the one on the other side.
Yeah, for sure. Yep. Realignment and crosswalk.
Yeah.
You know, a lot of people use that trail, whether they're out for a walk or they're walking their dogs or they're on a bicycle. It, it gets a decent amount of use since it is our only paved trail right now.
I use it all the time. Training our dog to, to navigate that, that diagonal on, on, on around here. But I think this is a much better solution, by the way. Agreed.
Okay. This is Ralph's list.
Yeah, I'm not sure. Most of this is kind of what we've talked about. The only thing I thought was that I would have, certainly my, my number one, along, I think with Carol, we're all right up there. Get, you know, get that regional, you know, planning going, get, get us co-directed and, you know, I'll stick my head out for that one as well. Traffic safety, which I don't think was brought up. I know I've talked to now a number of people who tried to make the left on 248 in the morning, coming out of there at 8:30 and they can't get out. So I don't know if we're just waiting for, or maybe we need another one, you know, some, some better traffic control, because I think we're just waiting for someone to get whacked. And, you know, maybe in a bad, in a bad way. And I certainly don't want to go to anybody's funeral. So, you know, if we can put some pressure in the right way on what we need to do on 248, I think it would serve. Because we're going to have more people coming in. It's only going to get worse. It's not going to get better.
Yeah, Ralph, I think we have to foster a better, maybe a stronger relationship with UDOT than we currently have. That might be our first step in that direction.
Well, we've got a bunch of stuff on the UDOT.
We have a very good relationship with UDOT, but they have their processes, their procedures and how they decide when this stuff gets done. And, you know, making noise is great and we can give them a, a petition, but they still have their standards. So, you know, they're currently working on a, a plan to put a light in at Brown's Canyon area. That's coming. I expect it'll be in within the next 12 months. But the rest, you know, I, we've been, we've been petitioning with UDOT for two years now to get the finalized, finalized approval for the entrance to claim, which they've agreed, you know, and signed off on in the, in the corridor agreement. And they still haven't given us the paperwork and all those people who have invested in property there can't actually move in because we don't have a legal entrance. So that, you know, that's a, you know, those are the kinds of things we're working on. So, you know, I don't know, Chris, we have a good relationship. We know all the people, but they have their processes and they are an entity upon, among themselves. So other than, I don't know what else to do, but I'm open to suggestions.
Yeah. I, I don't know. I don't either. You know, and, you know, there's a, there's a court of public opinion. There's the court of what happens when that bad accident occurs, but you know, that will be a situation where somebody's already suffered the consequences of someone of, of one of our public entities not doing anything. I don't know either. So let's just put that as a, you know, an exploratory, so to speak, or or what, you know, kind of what, what can, what could we do more than we're doing now? That's all.
I, what I'll do is I can reach out to, you know, we did the, when they did the chip seal a couple of summers ago, it was, the noise thing became very awful and they got a lot of calls and they held a meeting. They didn't do anything about it, but they held a meeting, which I attended amongst others and, you know, shared our concerns. So they, you know, they basically, from what I could tell, they basically came to placate the community. But nothing changed. They didn't make one iota of change based on being dragged out and forced to come to a meeting. So I don't know.
Yeah, I hear. And you know what? The funny thing is, I'm looking at what they did with Kern's Boulevard. So they made all these grandiose recommendations to widen and then Park City just overturned it. So, you know, I'm, I don't, I don't know, you know, to some extent, maybe I need a, a lesson on how the laws are worked in Utah, but it just seems like sometimes we're kind of quote, quote unquote, ass backwards here on, on, you know, some of that. So anyway, not going to stay ahead. That, that's my only comment.
We, we talked to UDOT a lot. They know, believe me, they know about our concerns about speed. I, I, you know, there's, you know, I think we may have to go around UDOT. I think maybe that's really the suggestion is to stop talking to UDOT and start talking to representatives.
I think we should do all of the above. You know, I don't know who at UDOT that you're in regular contact with, but I, I think we should take, you know, a multi-pronged approach to trying to influence what we think is best along that UDOT corridor.
I know that as far as talking to representatives, I'll need somebody else besides me because I am not particularly supported by the representatives today. So.
So Ralph, I'm interested in what your vision was for number five.
Well, a little bit about, you know, Carol brought up, you know, more, some town halls. And which one? Like number A, get acquainted with hideout, so to speak, is?
Well, just the whole, the whole point there is this bilateral communication, particularly new hideouters. So,
Yeah, I mean, we live.
Did you have a vision in, in mind there? What, what form this would take?
I was thinking about that, Jerry. You know, I mean, we have so much social media. Now, we don't want to get caught into the downside of social media that you've pointed out so well, when we, you know, when everybody just jumps in on Nextdoor makes a, you know, makes a mishmash of things. But what could we do to, for people who do buy in our town? Who do, do invest in as, as new residents, if we had a better, you know, get acquainted or reach out and then, you know, even great, you know, maybe that's the place to say, hey, are you going to be here a lot? What kind of skills, you know, what, what's your background? Here's mine kind of thing. And say, hey, you know, we're growing our town. We're looking for skills like this. And, you know, it's like, that might be the great time to help them get acquainted with our issues, our challenges, and maybe ask them for, if you have time and you have some expertise in one or two of these three areas, we'd love to have you get involved, you know? So it could serve a dual purpose, Jerry.
Or maybe a brochure.
I mean, one of the things that, that new communities, communities do when new, new customers come in is they have what's called a newcomers.
And I think we have that, don't we? Or somebody said that, I know Park City does. When I, when I.
Yeah, I don't believe Hideout has newcomers.
Yeah, that was, sorry. So, you know, yeah, something along that line, but then, you know, trying to fill people in on, you know, what we're trying to accomplish. Putting some positive spins on certain things right from the start and then, you know, sharing them with our, you know, being honest, transparency is always best. And, and say, just saying, hey, you know, these are areas that we're trying to fill some roles with. If you have an interest, if you've done this before, or do you like to get involved and start doing some things, you know, here's your opportunity. You know, like I keep going back to Sarah, she, she never was on a planning board before. She's, she's, she's a medical doctor, spending a lot of time. And yet she, you know, she picked up on that right away.
So Ralph, are you thinking that this is some combination of an about us and how you can be involved? Is it both of those things?
It sounds a little self-serving when you say that, Jerry. So I want to make it valuable to them and valuable to us, you know, so that there's a benefit, so that we're giving them information about, you know, hey, it is three and a half miles to go get gas. So by the way, you know, here's, here, here's some, you know, just little things. You know, if you want to, you know, if you look at Park City, they have, they have, they actually have sites that will. that will share information on where to get this, where to get that. I'm not saying we have to do anything nearly that complicated.
We have, we have some, quite a bit of that actually on our website. One of the issues we have is people prefer next door to the town website.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I guess what I was getting at Ralph was that the, the two prongs and not to, you know, it's, it's really an about us or an information, history of the town, some that kind of thing. But then there's also a call to action. So you're seeing both of those as part of this communication strategy.
Yeah, I don't see why not, Jerry. You know, yeah, yeah.
You know, we could even tie it to an event, a social event of some sort, you know, we could do a ski with your council or board with your council, bike with your council, kind of things. Fish with your council, golf with your council, depending on, you know, whatever, but we could do some things like that. I mean, that's where we get to know people.
Yeah, but I wouldn't hit any golf balls at anybody.
Didn't, didn't you have like a barbecue? Wasn't, it was before I moved here, but wasn't there?
Yeah, we did. We did, we did have a, we did have an event and we were hoping to have another one before, we had planned something for, for last year, but COVID took that away.
Right. Yeah, but if maybe, maybe this summer, early in the summer, we could try to do something like that and then even set up some tables. You know, and say like join this committee or join that committee. I don't know.
You know, Carol, with COVID, I don't, I don't know what we can plan right now. Maybe after the vaccines are rolled out, we could do something.
That's what I'm saying. Yeah, it would have to be till we get that herd immunity or whatever.
And probably after the annexation thing is resolved too.
Yeah, exactly.
Right, unfortunately, yeah.
So, so related to this, I think I'm going to just ask if you could put on the list, we need a, we need a better social media presence. I don't mean next door. I mean, you know, classic social media presence.
I've been looking for somebody to be our, our web, web person, continue to post for that, but I have not found anybody. I mean, there's lots of people who want to keep our hardware up, but there aren't a lot of people who do our marketing communication stuff.
That's a social media strategist, right?
Yeah. I don't think they're that hard to find. Especially if we get it.
We have not had any luck finding them.
Maybe, maybe looking at the residents where, you know, where many of us are. I'm going to go ahead and slam us. Many of us are older and maybe not so like, we're not tweeting all the time, but I, I, I think that we should at least put it on the list, something we should attempt to do.
Maybe it's something we reach out to, to one of the universities and do an intern sort of thing that, because, you know, it's that generation that's going to be more suited to this, shall we say?
Yeah, yes, yes. In my previous job before I work where I am now, I did know the person who was in charge of social media presence for an airline. It was a big deal job. And anyway, let's just put on the list and if, if it makes it, you know, if it makes the cut for what we're going to try to do this year, then we'll find somebody. We'll try to find somebody.
Yeah.
So I actually had found someone through community contact who said yes and started to work with her. And then she said, well, this isn't all that interesting and stopped helping us.
Yeah. Well, you know, it's real easy for me. I'm on my phone all the time. We had a Twitter account and we put together a strategy.
That I'm working on with Jan right now, that I think this could be one of the projects we could give her. And then she should be really good at it.
Yep.
So from Glennis, because she's new, she put these items in. So her item, take that out because I'm, Parks and Rec. So yeah, we have the, we have a, we do, it's called a post committee.
Yeah.
We, we have, we're not going to be able to cross-country ski in the golf course, but we can certainly do some other things. Certainly have to can do that. Ideally, we're hoping to be able to start to figure out how to do that down at the state parks. There's surprise.
Yeah. Well, she mentions UDOT in a couple of ways here as well. And, and the interesting one here is the Ross Creek entrance. Right now does not have a right turn lane and it probably should. Particularly with Deer Water and Deer Springs doing developments over there.
Yeah.
Yeah, totally agree, Jerry.
I do too. Yeah.
I like that she was involved in getting the speed limit reduced and, and involving PennDOT. So maybe she, we can get her to jump in.
Mm-hmm. Community involvement.
Yeah.
Yeah.
She's on the planning commission, so already, so. Carol Custerly, some engineering related stuff. Weed control, again, Arielle on there. She wants to do some work to upgrade the website. Again, that'd be a great project for this new person I'm working on with Jan. Town signs again. I mean, I think, so we should agree on our logo at some point, but you know, I, I have held back in changing the street signs logo to the new ones because I don't want to spend the money on the street signs. So we.
Yeah, I would agree. We have to see what we have in our budget. That sounds pretty discretionary.
I would love to get, you know, I'd like to get some, some swag for people to, you know, buy a hideout hat or a t-shirt or whatever.
Yeah, I tell, I tell you, you know, I, I hear what you're saying, but as soon as we settle on a brand, we need to brand. I mean, that is so important and, and not just business, but in government as well, I think. And, you know, you can buy Park City stuff all over the place. I think the merchandise side of it might be an interesting thing too. But spending money on updating the street signs, as long as it's in a branding effort, you know, campaign, I think is a, a good use of those funds. So that, you know, everything needs to be consistent across the website, across all of our signage. Everything needs to be branded. And I also like the idea of the photography. I just, you know, photography is an art. And having a, a good digital camera might not get us where we need to be there. So I, I think maybe to extend on that is maybe having a budget to periodically hire professionals to, you know, take some shots, take some drone aerial stuff, you know, there's, there's a lot of things that we could be doing that would help promote the town. But having a, a resident or some, a non-professional do that is probably not our best option.
Unless we had a good resident who met those qualifications, so.
Yeah, if we, if we had a, a professional photographer who was willing to donate, you know, time and or services, fantastic, but.
I got you. Those are hard. Yeah. There's no guarantee you'll find the right person.
Right.
Okay. And then, you know, I added a couple of comments from Chris tonight. Although she has already spoken, a number of the other things on the list are also hers. She has support for other things on the list as well. Um, okay.
So can we revisit last year's list as well and, and see what didn't get done?
Okay.
I'm sure there's some overlap, but I don't want to miss anything.
Give me a second to find it.
Polly's looking and I just want to say, I think we've made huge strides and I'm really pleased that we were able to work into the budget. And hire people like Thomas and Polly and Alicia and Kathleen helping us in infrastructure. And I think we're, we're really making some good headway into just upscaling the town and really appreciate all the efforts and, and, you know, I really like how Polly has increased the dialogue amongst town council and we have communication with staff and I think we've made some really good strides that way. So thank you.
You're here, Jan. I, I agree with you.
Well, Alicia.
And include yourself on that list, Jen.
Exactly.
Ah, we missed number two, the schools.
Did.
That's a good one not to miss.
Well, that's going to be, if we annex, that's going to solve part of it for sure.
I, I still think it's worth calling out. Maybe we can pick that one up from 2020 and bring it to 2021.
Well, and you know, that becomes also an argument for, in favor of the annexation is that it, it helps contribute to that solution.
Yep. Funny, I'm not, I'm not thinking about schools right now in COVID.
Yeah.
But, but that's important. Can you just highlight that one, Phil? Yeah. And then we'll bring, we should bring it over. Yep.
Yeah, ma- maybe that's how we address the things that need to be still on the list. A lot of these are duplicates.
District one is something we didn't talk about either.
That's right.
Well, we've done a lot of work on district one. We understand a lot more about it than we did before.
Well, yeah, but until.
It is not legally, it is not, I mean, from a legal perspective, it is not a, it is not a municipal issue. It is a taxpayer issue. So there's, there's a line that we have to walk about what we can do as a town versus what we can do as taxpayers.
I, I hear you, Phil, but it's, it's, I mean, we're, we're the elected representatives of the town residents of the taxpayers. And, you know, and many feel this is an injustice. And they're looking to us to, to guide the way, lead the way, to show a way out of this.
I, I apologize. Could you guys explain a little bit more to me about?
Yeah, I don't know what it is either.
What the, what the gap is here?
Every, every, each of you on your property tax bills pays a hideout district charge. And then some of us who will land in the district areas pay additional charges. So the question that a taxpayer would have is why am I paying for the district which is not providing me any service? Right? So, so the district, you know, the hideout district was, was drawn around three subsections of hideout. Golden Eagle, Soaring Hawk and Reflection Lane slash, lash, slash ridge. And those, peak property owners in those areas pay somewhere between twelve and thirty-five, twelve hundred, thirty-five hundred dollars a year for the privilege of living there for the next 20 years. If you remember when we were doing the impact fee, we cut out all of those, all the infrastructure for those subdivisions from the impact fee analysis because they were being subsidized through the district charge. So it would have been double, double dipping on the part of Mustang if we had included that. However, all of hideout pays a district charge. Whether they're, even though they're not necessarily in Soaring Hawk, Golden Eagle or Reflection Lane. And that charge is a few hundred dollars a year, I think, on most people's tax bills. But the question is why do we pay for a district that does not benefit Ohio?
And presumably it's that fee that we pay is for the administration of the district that we're not a part of. And they charge it almost equal to what we pay the town itself. So the town can do everything that it does on the amount of tax that, you know, that we get charged and the district takes the same amount. And what do they do with it?
Don't disagree, Jerry. I'm just saying. Well, I mean, from a legal perspective, again, Polly will have to weigh in on this after she better understands it, but legal perspective, all we can do is make sure the residents understand what it is so that they can figure out if they want to work together to figure out how to challenge it. But municipality.
Phil, correct me if I'm wrong, the, the, the prior administration had to agree to the formation of the district.
They did.
So to say that we have no role in it, I think is, is.
I don't know that we can make it go, I mean, the work that we did and, you know, we pulled grandma documents from them and so forth, trying to understand that. Again, I'm going to need legal help to determine if we can, if we are, as a municipality can quote disband the district.
Okay. Well, in, in the, in the spirit of let's not solve it right now, I think it's important to be on the list. I think until the residents see this disappear from their tax bill, it's going to continue to be a thorn.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks for that explanation. That's helpful. And, and, and I wasn't trying to solve it either, but just wanted to get better informed and maybe what the liaison would do to challenge that. I think that's where you're going on this, but I guess we'll take, definitely I would keep that around. That item.
Yeah, I think everything else we've addressed, at least on that page.
Done some here, but we can keep that.
So is this, I don't remember this one specifically. Are we talking about the master HOA, the liaison with the master HOA?
Yes, yeah.
I think that's still a good idea.
I think we've got a snowflake's chance in hell, but we'll try.
Well, Phil, that second from the bottom bullet about develop a plan for the use of the land that's deeded to the town, that's something.
Yeah, that's been worked on with, by Thomas to, at the moment, but. We don't have it to a final point yet.
I think the other things are, have come up. Yeah.
Good.
Good idea, Jerry. To review, to revisit the list. Okay. Okay. So. I will. In the course of the next week or so. Consolidate this into. Uh, cause some, some concepts are, are overlapping, so we'll combine some of the thoughts. I will attempt not to lose any of the intent. But there's several people mentioned, you know, community relations and that kind of stuff, so I'll group all those together under a single line item. And, uh, you know, get a, get a list out to you all for, um. For input.
And your intent is that we prioritize.
Yeah, I think we, we have to do some kind of.
Rating ranking.
Do some kind of, some kind of ranking, Jerry, I mean, is, I mean, you know, we had. Six, eight, ten, twenty. Thirty items last year. And. And then other things came up as well that we, that aren't even on this list, because of things that happened in the course of the year, so. Um, you know, we gotta get it down to some number that. So that the staff at least has some focus on what's, you know, what's our, our view of the most important stuff. And, you know, as we work on getting more people engaged with us, we can take on more, but, you know, otherwise it's just a wish list and. Stuff doesn't get done, so we, I think we have to do that. As a group, so we just. You know, we'll, we'll have. Input from all of you, uh, so what are your A's and, you know, everyone that gets, anyone that gets five A's. From the five members of council, uh, you know, becomes a, a high critical item, you know, kind of thing.
Hey, um, Mayor, can I suggest that when we do these rankings and orderings and try to figure out, you know, what. Surfaces to the top, um, that we also consider what we might wanna tackle first half of 2021 versus second half. Only because, you know, I'm thinking of the, um, referendum. And that there probably be different priorities for the first half of the year than the second half. Possibly.
Call, uh, also point out this is an election year for some of the folks on this call.
Yeah.
Isn't it, it, well, this is a question for Polly, me, um. Who, I know I'm up, my term is over, cause this will be the end of my fourth year, but.
You're up and, and Hans's replacement, and I can't remember, we, I, Alicia and I have it mapped out. I just don't remember which one of you is the Hans replacement.
I, I feel like, because everyone else has been appointed there, it's possible they might have to be elected. I, I don't know, this is where we need. Guidance from Alicia and Polly.
Well, whoever was appointed to. I can go back and look at when people were appointed. I would rely on whoever.
Done that, Polly.
Attorney was, Dan was very competent. That if there was someone that needed an election, it would have happened already. But otherwise, um, you have it on your website for who, um. What your terms are, and if you replace somebody, you take over their term, you don't. Uh, get another four years. You have to be elected based on your cycle.
Uh, so Polly, I thought.
Kurt and Vitas.
What we'll do is. Alicia and I have looked at this and we will send you the, the, the tree, okay, the, uh. What's the right word for this? But anyway, so we'll send you the tree, starting with, uh, the very first council when I came on board, which included. Uh, Jim and, uh.
Dean.
Yep, Jim, Dean, Doug, Hans, myself.
Doug, Hans and, yeah.
Now, Jim and Dean, both, neither of those were vacancies that were filled with appointments. So those were filled by, um, by Kurt, Vitas and myself. Um, we're all elected in January of this, of last year.
Okay.
Right, so Kurt was initially appointed when Doug passed and then he was elected. At the last election.
Right.
Right.
So whoever took Kurt's seat and whoever filled Vitas's seat still have three years left on. On, uh, their term.
Right, so it's, it's really Chris and whoever replaced Hans.
Yeah.
In the mayor's office, yeah. My, uh, my seat will be up for reelection as well, or up for election as well, yeah. So.
So they're gonna be second half. Up for a two-year term, because, you know, they were appointed but not elected, therefore. In the next available election, they're not up for a two-year term, that seat, that's much my question.
Just, as Polly just said, when you're appointed, you're appointed to fill out the term. Of the person you're replacing.
Right. So, and then.
So if there were three years left on their term, they're three years, they have three years to go. Polly, I think, um, for the benefit of some of the council, if you would. Find the relevant, um, statute and share that with the, with the council and, or Alicia can probably find it as well.
Yeah, I'd be happy to do that, maybe. If Alicia and I, if you have your list that you've put together with Alicia. We can look at when everyone was appointed and the remainder of the term and make sure it was all done right. Um, a lot of it depends on when the resignation happens in the year and where it is in the term.
Great, yeah, thank you, cause I've observed in other jurisdictions that there have been. Elections for people who are just filling a two-year, you know, they're, they're for two years. Um, and I, I can't remember the circumstances, but I just remember it here in Utah, so. That would be, uh, great, thank you.
Okay.
And, and just my point of view, Chris, I, I hope you run again. And Phil, I, I hope you do too, but I, I, I sense you've already made up your mind on that, but.
I won't be running again. I can't afford a divorce. That was, I'm serious. I'm serious. My wife has had it. Supposed to be retired, we're supposed to be doing stuff and. You know.
You see, this is why you can't get good people to come, so I'm just giving you a hard time.
Well, it's a good way to keep your mind active, right? Once you've retired, you gotta, you gotta have something to keep your mind active.
Well, I, no doubt, look, it's been incredibly intellectually stimulating and a lot of fun in a lot of ways. I learned a hell of a lot. But, um, I really. There's a lot, you know, from personal reasons, not just the fact that Lynn would. Caststrate me, if not push me off the deck. You know, we both have aging families that are starting to take a fair bit of our time, stuff like that, we just.
Yeah. Well, I'm, I know there'll be an opportunity to say later as well, but Phil, you have taken this town a long way in your short term, so. You know, there's.
Yeah.
I mean, you, you, you've taken this town a long way towards being a professional town that, you know, and, oh, credit due you.
Thank you. I've had a lot of help, including you guys, obviously, but, you know, we've been blessed to get. Uh, you know, the changes we needed at the staff level and the, the funds we needed to be able to do the things that we've done to move the. You know, the quality of the, the infrastructure and work up, so. Thanks for that, but yeah, so that's something for you guys to think about is who wants to run for mayor. And this is not official, I think, but it will be in June when, uh, when I don't fill out the forms. So, you know, if you've got people in mind that you wanna start. Um, lobbying, uh, you're certainly welcome to do that. I'm, I'm gonna be doing some lobbying on my own. I don't know, uh. Some of the people that may not want my endorsement, because it may hurt their, uh, campaign, so that's something to think about. Anyway, we'll deal with that in the future. Okay, so thank you, folks. The meeting, um, is at a point now where I'd like to suggest that we had a motion to adjourn. Somebody would make that.
Also move.
Thank you, Carol.
I'll second it.
And second, Ralph, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you all very much. Again, appreciate your time tonight and, uh. We will, uh, I guess I'll get this out to you shortly and then we'll move it forward.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Okay, sounds good.
Good night, all.
Thanks, guys.
Hey, good night.
Okay, good night, everyone.